Chair is all yours.
Um, hello, we are calling our City of Gilroy Library Commission Regular Meeting to Order. It is Wednesday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, and the time is seven eleven P M. We will now have roll call.
A roll call, I have Chair Baxter, Baxter President, Chair Vice Chair, Michelle Body.
He's raising his hand.
And then I have Commissioner Kim.
President.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now we will have the Secretary's report.
Yes, so the meeting packet was posted in the city kiosk on Friday, August ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, and now we will have approval of minutes from Wednesday, May eighth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll move to approve the minutes for May eighth, twenty twenty-four, and I think Saidis gave the second that for me.
Same body, second.
He's waving a hand.
And all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So the motion to approve minutes moves three to one, I mean, three to zero. And now we're gonna have um approval of our agenda.
And today's agenda, right?
And today's agenda, thank you, yes, August, I mean, September, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, and I will move to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Kim.
That we need to move.
Oh.
Seven, seven-two, right in front of seven-one, please.
That is correct.
Okay.
So can you say that motion again?
I would love to, um, I would move to approve um today's agenda, but just changing seven-two to go before seven-one.
And then we have a second.
He is raising his hand.
Okay, and um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He's raising his hand.
So we have a motion to approve the agenda for today, September fourteenth, with one change, all in favor?
Aye.
We did that.
Yeah.
So we moved the motion three to one, three to zero.
You got it.
What's going on?
The one I get the lot of card, okay. And now we're going to uh go to item number six, our library staff recognition, City of Gilroy Library Staff Recognition.
Okay, so uh this is my wonderful opportunity to introduce you all and have you recognize and give kudos to Juan Guzman. He is our library assistant here at Gilroy Library, um, he has been such an amazing addition to our team. He is currently in library school and on track to graduate this, this December?
Uh, no, actually, May.
May, May, so this coming year, so we're excited to have another future librarian in our ranks, uh. Juan has reached the community with open arms, he is a musician at heart, so he's provided music programs. Uh, he's worked on our ESL programs, he's worked on our computer literacy programs uh in Spanish. So Juan brings an enthusiasm to the job, the role, uh, he provides so much community care. And he really is, we're very lucky to have him as part of the Gilroy team. Uh, Santa Clara County Library District is really lucky to have somebody who is so open to new ideas, to bring fresh ideas to our system. And also, um, he really provides a continuum of care that um is is amazing to watch. Uh, patrons seek him out specifically because of his warm, engaging, welcoming nature. And we're really lucky to have him as part of the team here and as the district team. We're so excited to see what you bring from the future, and we're so excited to support you on your journey towards life. Yeah, you really are integral part of this team, and we're really glad to have you.
Yeah. That's, uh, thank you so much for coming to our Library Commission meeting. And um I just wanna say, my own personal experience, I've always had a wonderful encounter with you. Yeah, and um and Cassandra's correct, you're very attentive and and I appreciate that, cuz I always ask a lot of questions. Yeah, absolutely.
Anything, anything you'd like to? You know?
Temporaneous remarks, uh, I can come up with a few.
Thank you, good.
Well, for me, I think uh for the longest time, I thought of libraries as a place for books, but really, it's a place for people.
That's right.
Yeah, and I really enjoy working with uh people that think differently than I do, that uh give me new ideas, give me inspiration. Um, and I like helping people, and I think that uh, I think that in the, with that goal in mind, like, how can I help? Right, like, that really is what guides my work.
That's beautiful.
So this is Juan, and he's with us during the week and on weekends, and uh please uh attend the program he hosts, and um, yeah, we'll see you, we'll see you on the desk as well.
You're welcome, thank you so much, that was beautiful.
Thank you, Juan, for you.
Beautiful, oh, how wonderful that is, I thought we should give him a back.
I know, you know.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll make sure we do something like that next time, that's wonderful. Um, didn't anyone have anything to say? They don't, yeah, wasn't it?
I, I will just add, just try to speak up so that you can hear.
Of course.
Absolutely, Said, we will speak up, okay, and then we're going to go to item number seven, unfinished business. Um, and the first item would be review of proposed conceptual plan of improvements to the library facilities utilizing unspent library bond proceeds.
Right. Um, I'll be happy to go ahead and uh make some opening remarks and provide some background, and then I'll hand it over to our counterparts at the library, and then we actually have um, somebody here from our consulting team, they'll present um over some of the highlights. So just some background information is, in this beautiful library facility that we're in, um, this was a voter-approved initiative back in two thousand and eight. Uh, specifically Measure F, um, which was approved to issue bonds up to thirty-seven million dollars. Um, and then the subsequent to the issuance and the approval, the library facility was constructed and opened in April of twenty twelve. Uh, from those uh bonds that were issued, uh, there's approximately five point four million dollars that remains today, uh, sold in unspent bond proceeds. So subsequent to the construction of the facility, um, the intention of the um council, the library Bond Oversight Committee, as well as the Library Commission, was always to spend the remaining bond proceeds to make additional improvements to the facility, and um during the COVID onset, um, obviously, our um plans were halted. Um, and then as part of the uh current budget uh development, we had sought out to the Library Commission, as well as to the council, on developing the work plan items. Uh, Library Commission did adopt a work plan item, um, specifically focused around how to expand those library bond proceeds. So fast forward, um, we are at a point where the county library staff has prepared a conceptual proposal for consideration. Um, they're presenting it to the city staff initially, uh, we did some due diligence work, working with our municipal finance uh folks. And um so tonight, we'll be presenting you uh those conceptual proposals. Um, just with a caveat that uh we do have five point four million dollars available, what you'll see today um is not hundred percent to be paid by the bond proceeds, there's gonna be obviously some elements that qualify, specifically um items that are classified as repair or equipment or furnishing, which is not attached to the property itself. Those are all items that we would have to find alternative uh funding for. Um, again, the city staff and library staff are of the understanding that these are the limitations, and uh we're willing to partner with the library uh district here on, on that initiative. And possibly make uh financial contributions as well. So uh with that, at this point, I'll go ahead and uh hand this over to Jennifer to go and go over the proposal, and then I'll bring it back at the end to kind of finish off.
Um, so these, uh, so before we um dive in, I'm gonna actually let Katia um sign Burkhart go through the slides, but I just wanted to preface that, um, first off, we're so appreciative of the city recognizing the value that the library has in the community, that Cassandra and her team exemplify every day, and to really refresh and reinvent spaces so that they are matching what your community needs, um, we continue to, you know, evolve services after the pandemic, and we know that public spaces have that opportunity to kind of refresh. So we're really excited, um, just to take us back a few steps, as we're not very kindly said, you know, back in twenty eighteen, we did, uh, you know, our uh kind of research on what was important to the community, what was, what was being used well, and there were a few things that kind of popped up, so how do we know that three out of four people who come to our libraries come for children's programs, and how do we expand our children's spaces? Um, what do we have um kind of for our teens, right, we know that in this community, how do we maybe enhance that space? Um, so that it, it allows them kind of some, some teen area and, and still doesn't impact maybe other parts of the library. We know that digital use, right, so so many people are using us electronically, but are they physically using our computers? Or do we need small meeting room spaces so that people are plugging in their own devices? Um, our restrooms need attention, like, those are the kinds of things that after you've loved a building for over a decade, they need a little bit of attention. Um, and also to safety, both for our patrons and for our staff, are our staff areas secure, right? What building maintenance systems need to be updated, not the funniest, I mean, not the real fun stuff, I know, but really imperative, um, in operating big public facilities. Um, and again, accessibility always important to us, that everyone of every ability can use and enjoy the library. And finally, just that evolution that we talked about, I know, um, we'll talk a little bit about open access, but how are our service models evolving to better serve your community? And how do we make sure that the facilities catch up with that? So um Katia is here from Steinberg Hart, and she said right there, so I can speak a little louder. And she's done some great work, so we're really excited to, again, offer these concepts as a place to jump off.
Nice.
Yes.
You just let me, let me know.
So we started with the understanding that there were some funds available. The way that I don't explain is there are things that are applicable to be paid by a bond, there are some that are not. So typically, what we think is, you turn the building upside down, what will shake, you cannot pay that, you know. So anything that is furniture, anything that are walls, that are renovations, that's what can be paid by the bonds, so we started with that premise, next. So we also um identified, yeah, they're good, some operational issues. Jennifer mentioned accessibility, you know, being the key, wellness for people that come here, and interestingly enough, we started some of these conversations before the pandemic. So we, they had to evolve, you know, a little bit as we continue the conversations, and now we have revised these in order to really incorporate the latest priority. And you know what's happening after COVID. So access and wellness, think about it as the overarching themes, but also access for additional children's area and how um programs have evolved, and I'll guide you through those. So the circulation desk, most likely, you know, it needs some improvements, but most likely, that would be a furniture item. We just have included, um, I'll start with, with the issues, the circulation, like, the reference desk in the children's area, that some of the materials have already been chipped, there's no access for um, somebody, a kid in a wheelchair, and also just the staff could have a better access, you know, to the community and presence, you know, to the children. Um, the children's area always growing, and there's no place to, not to park strollers, so we identify that as a priority. And the, if you remember, when you go out, there's an area that is already an overhang, and it only needs an enclosure, you know, around the fronts of the library. So we think that that could be an opportunity, you know, on both ends, to utilize that space, that there's already roof, and you just need to enclose that space to expand children's area and possible space, you know, the ground floor, next. On the upper floor, um, I'm gonna start with a, with a corner, and thinking, how can rooms be better utilized? We think that that corner space could be great, you know, for a maker space, thinker space, so what can be done, you know, in that area? The teen space, that feels a little dated, you know, they have some benches, but, but it could be a revamp, you know, of the program, particularly, we're touching the children's area on the ground floor. The reference desk by the, that is overlooking, you know, their first floor, that, again, with needs evolving, desktop computers are no longer needed as many of them. There's a more use for, you know, to be flexible and more mobile, so what can be done in that space? And then the corner in the back, that is a little bit hidden and, you know, could be better used. Um, and as Jennifer mentioned, the need for individual spaces, you know, to meet in smaller groups, but we think that that's, that's a priority. Keep going. And uh building management system, it gets hot sometimes, you know, during the summer, so some of the windows do not open, you know, the mechanical system doesn't quite work. It could be an alignment there, and we think that that could be paid in also by default, so. These are concept plans, don't think that this is the ultimate solution, but as architects, we need to start somewhere and start thinking in order to just have a general idea of where we are. Keep going. So, the reception area and the reference desk ne- next to the children, we think that that could be improved with furniture, removing some of the ceilings, or really making it a little bit more open. The children's areas, I mentioned, taking advantage of that area that is already expanded, that the building overhangs, enclosing that, and really expanding the entire children's area. You know, to have a better connection also with the outdoor that you have already removed. On the other side, you know, actually thinking that there could be another community room downstairs, rather than people coming, you know, to the, to the second level. And this is something, again, you know, we've identified it as a possible, you know, option, it doesn't have to be exactly like that, but again, utilizing that space, that there's already an overhang building that can just be enclosed and the systems brought back, next. And on the second floor, again, I'll start in the corner, what it could be, that maker space, tinker space, with some rideable walls, maybe, you know, additional technology to, to bring that to that space. The teen area, removing those benches and really just enclosing that area to make it a larger area that is a little bit more usable and flexible. You know, to be mindful of what may be coming in the future, and rethinking, you know, that reading area in the corner. There could be some small meeting rooms for two to four people, you know, additional, you know, meeting space, you know, a little bit in the open. We think that there's an opportunity in that corner to really revitalize an area that right now, it's a little bit under use. These are just some thoughts of, you know, and ideas of what spaces could be, the maker space, we think it needs to be flexible, but it has to have technology, making it a little bit of a dirty space, you know, it's, it's okay, you know, to do certain things. Um, the teen space, well-marked, but also visible, a little bit more updated of what you have, and um, next. Small mini rooms, what it could be, one to four people, working in a computer with a, with a screen. Reading area, having some intimate furniture, you know, and reconfigurable for the future, and the small meeting rooms, you know, really open, you know, for people to use them, maybe there's, there could be some type of system to reserve them, or people just going in. This is a rendering of what the community room downstairs or that expansion area could be, and it doesn't have to be a community room, it could be another flexible space, even in the future, you decided to use it for something else. That's it, and um, again, we have gone through this for years, different librarians. What are we doing now, I think, but I feel that some of those priorities have adjusted, but at the end, some of them were very aligned still with what, you know, what the needs of the current library. So I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, very nice presentation. Um, I, I have a couple of, of thoughts that I was thinking about. Um, so um, thinking about universal design, can you speak to that at all in your creation?
Yeah, we, gonna put a preface there, but we have a commitment with the Kelsey Guidelines, the Kelsey is actually an organization that promotes universal design through housing, but also, you know, in all the community buildings, we've been implementing those guidelines throughout all the projects that we do. So the idea is, if you don't mind going back to either one of the plans. The idea is that, you know, with the furniture, the furniture will be accessible, and we can, you know, help the library, and they already have a plan in order to do this. But that is one of the reasons, actually, to go for furniture for some of the circulation desks, it's way easy to adapt, also have ergonomic stations, you know, stand, you know, um, sit-down stations is way easier to do that these days with furniture than with fixed stations.
No, I agree with that, um, and um, as much as we love technology, and this is for, for all library folks here, as much as we love technology, research is showing that kids need to play.
Yes.
So if there's, as we're creating or expanding, if we can just keep in mind in all of this, that making sure that adults and children have places to create, yeah, and, and play.
That was the intent, actually, of the maker space.
Nice.
You know, yes, it's good to have small meeting rooms with, you know, the ability to have a video conference or a monitor, but at the end, you know, you need to get yourself sturdy, you know, and do something, so that's the idea for that room, but also the idea for the teen space, keeping it a little bit more open, you know, more flexible in order to be able to do those play activities rather than bench seating that is a little bit more formal.
Right.
Um, that allows for less flexibility.
And I love the fact that you're focused, that you guys are focusing on teens, cuz we have a lot of teens in Gilroy who need things to do and places to go.
Yes.
So that, that's super cool, um, and have you all considered a pod for breastfeeding at all? A what?
The mama, well, we have had fetus, and, you know, nothing's off the table, right, we're continuing, and Furniture Solutions certainly gave us that flexibility, certainly.
Um, I think those were, those were my only things, yeah, and I, and I liked how you're speaking about access and the importance of access. And we have a conversation in common back here.
Size change.
The size will pretty much stay the same, the change is that the two areas on the ground floor that are already under the overhang of the second floor, we're, we're expanding in that area and enclosing that. So it increases a little bit, but it's not something that will be substantial, something that it's always, um, quite expensive is actually to do anything with waterproofing and with roofs.
Yeah.
So we were trying to be efficient with the money and the funds that you have from the bond.
Right.
And trying to say, where, where can we add without having to do a roof, waterproofing, new gutters, blah, 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 stucco, et cetera, so that's why we're using those two areas downstairs, so yes, there's, what, what it changes a little bit, but not, not by much.
So that is, that will, some of the existing activities, some new activities, because you are okay to do this.
The idea is actually that the children's space stays as a children's space, but that the room downstairs could be flexible enough for different activities, you know, depending on the priorities, you know, the library.
And I like that you said the friends area might expand, that the friends book it, yeah, that, that's cool too.
Go to the first part of your minutes.
You must say, yeah, I thought I heard that, I could have just dreamt it.
So, the area where the community room is, is where the friends of the library would be, but it could be that that room could be used for the friends of the library, it really depends, we're just expanding that area, taking advantage of that space that is already there.
Yeah.
As I said, it's, nothing is off the table, but there are some constraints when it comes to money and space, and where do we, where do we, how do we spend, you know, money wisely?
Right, that's true.
We'll get there.
He's gonna come with this hard hat.
Yes, I, I, uh, if there, I guess if there are questions for um our consulting team or, you know, Jennifer per se on the design, I think we address those, and then I'll kind of go into the next steps.
Okay.
After, after, that's okay.
Perfect, okay, so I guess we've had public comment, right, on number seventeen, I mean, seven.
Well, there's actually no members of the.
Oh, okay. I don't think that was public, um, and then now we'll go to library reports.
Wait, wait.
No, oh, yeah, yeah.
Do you guys have any questions for me? Yeah, if, or Cassandra, no, I, I have any questions for the savage. We can talk forever.
Yeah.
No, I mean, my, my two cents is, I love the bigger children's area, I've been in that nest area with way too many kids, and expanding that is wonderful, I think having one of those big community rooms downstairs for families is great. Um, and I love the idea of a nursing pod, like a nursing room.
Yeah.
I don't, it's like a aquarium, there's a nursing room, that's like, well, the aquarium, there's a fish tank, but just like a rocker, and it, it's, it's like a little closet.
Yeah.
Um, if, there's just so many little, little people wandering around with their moms and their families, that that would be, I think, a great addition.
Yeah.
And I, for the children's area, clearly, I hang out there a lot, but my little, she can't see over, I mean, she's six, and she's just barely being able to see over the counter to ask for help.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We doing, you know, that reference desk.
That's a little something, I don't know.
Spaces in the back, you know, it was probably good at a certain point, but it, it needs a refresh, you know, the, the latest in the library design is actually to tap those reference desks as furniture. And as I mentioned, in order to be flexible enough, that if a young, you know, individual comes, that you, you know, you said, okay, how can I help you? You turn around, or if you wanna be standing, that you do something, you know, similar for the staff, so wellness these days is the priority as well as access, and that is easily achieved with furniture systems for the uh main circulation desk and for the reference desk, you know, the kids' area.
I can barely.
And those do fall under our responsibility, so a lot of the opportunity here is to modify the building to be more flexible so that we can then add in a mobile desk, right, something that addresses those things and can change again in five or six years, right?
Absolutely.
You're, in this building, it's beautiful, but it is nailed down, so you wouldn't hurt, when you turn it over, not a lot would fall out, so please know that we are also prioritizing, if the city is prioritizing this work, we too will be looking at, you know, that F and E, that furniture fixtures and equipment um, to ensure that we're putting things in the right buckets, and I know we have friend support and other people's work, so yes, we're committed as well to, to making those solutions collectively together.
Awesome. Any other comments or questions? Okay, and now we'll go to item number three, possible.
Let me just uh wrap up the presentation here, and then we'll jump on to the next item. Um, so one of my, actually, um, one of the favorite things when Katia presented this uh to the city staff was the, have the ability to have a community room downstairs with access outdoors, so not only is it a facility for the library to conduct, obviously, programming, but the city can also utilize it for any public events or such, so I think that was real, a really, really neat concept as well, so. Uh, with that, um, I'll say, as the city staff again, uh, we've met with our C I P engineering team, um, we're very supportive of moving this forward, we're excited to move this forward. Um, and then, you know, we, the recommendation before you tonight is uh to recommend um, to the city council to formally add this project to the city's C I P program in the fiscal year twenty-five. Um, and one of the other added benefits um of us moving this project forward is, um, alternative is, of course, if uh we were to not move forward with this project, we had those bond monies, and we would ultimately end up refunding those funds back to the taxpayers, uh, but because, given the market environment we're in, and if we were to ultimately move forward this project, the cost of borrowing today is much higher, so it's almost a financial incentive for us to utilize. is much higher. So it's almost a financial incentive for us to utilize the unspent bond proceeds on this project. So, um, you know, happy to share that as well. So with that, I, I'll just say as far as next steps go, um, given that you're gonna make a recommendation, um, the engineering team will put the CIP charter together, take it to the city council with the recommendation, staff's recommendation, the library commission's recommendation to move this forward and add it to the CIP, uh, um, plan basically, and then, uh, project will go into a design phase, uh, development, depending on the lead time from the, the design team, obviously there's gonna be a, a number of months, uh, where we'll have to collaborate and, and so forth. And then ultimately, when the design conceptual or designs are prepared, uh, they would come back before library commission, there will be a public participation process as well. We want to make sure the community is happy with what, uh, you know, we're putting together. And then ultimately, at, um, at a later stage, it'll be put up to BIF construction. So that's typical process and that's what I would expect, um. As fast as we'd like to move, uh, unfortunately, you know, things, uh, things do take time, especially the designing process and so forth. So, uh, but we're happy to move this forward.
Nice. Awesome. So we need to make a motion. Right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so as far as the, um, yeah, I, I cannot give you an exact date unfortunately, but I think as far as the next step is, uh, after this recommendation, the city council will weigh in to formally add the project to the city's CIP plan in the current fiscal year. Um, our engineering team, uh, is ready and available, uh, to go ahead and initiate the work on the design process. I, I could probably guess, I think if I were to guess, I, I think that would be probably a good, um, good timeline to say, construction at least wouldn't start by, by twenty-twenty.
No, but we need to exit the process, so.
Yeah.
I don't a hundred percent know how to phrase this, but I move to move this along to the city council.
With a recommendation to add it to the city's capital improvement program.
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
And would you like to, okay, and we have a second?
He's raising his hand.
He's raising his hand. And all in favor?
Yes.
I, so, so we are recommending to move forward uh, with the conceptual proposal, um, that city council added to the project to the city's capital improvement program and utilize the unspent library bond proceeds with the motion of three to zero. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to, um, item seven-one, review library commission work plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-five. Staff report.
Yes, so, um, I'm actually gonna move it back to Chair Baxter.
Okay.
Um, in regards to your experience.
Oh, sure.
At the conference.
Absolutely.
You attended in San Diego.
Absolutely. So I went to the American Library Association Conference. This is my first time going to an ALA.
Can I give these to Said?
Yeah, yeah. Um, and I hopefully lost five pounds. Um, so first I want to thank, uh, my co-commissioners and the library and Adam and, um, everyone, uh, um, Harjot for helping to make this happen. And, um, if possible, I think it's wonderful that two commissioners go next year, if that's possible. I don't know, I'm just saying. It's a whole lot to take in. Yeah. But this, my, my, my quick takeaway would be going to the conferences, whether it's every year, every other year, whether it's the, the, uh, large one or the California one. It's a great, um, a great, uh, boost and spark for commissioners to just say, oh my God, there's so much that libraries offer. Yeah. Um, so, uh, so, uh, yeah, so this slide says, uh, ALA takeaways, the library connection, um, leveraging libraries and the power of our libraries to help students, families, communities, all the stuff that we talk about. And before I forget, I brought goodies over here. And, um, and for all of you who have never been to it, library conference, just imagine a huge, like over two thousand vendors and everything they give away is free. And there's so much that they give away, that there's the US Postal Office in the back where people are shipping stuff. There was cards, there's, oh, yeah, yeah. Think of, think of saying one more reason on the library. Okay, next, next slide. Um, so, okay, so this, these are some of my takeaways that, that I wanted to share that I think, you know, can help just keeping in forefront of us as a commission. Um, they had different stations there, like they had a diversity station. It's probably not conversation, but, um, throughout the whole week, they had different authors talking about different things. I loved this plant panel and I got you some post-it notes from them because they talked about diversity in publishing and they shared their stories of how they became publishers and, um, and one that pulled my heart was she didn't learn to read till she was in the third grade. And it was a teacher that took her under her wing and her love for reading and books. Yeah. So, you know, it's pulling heartstrings, all of that. Um, and then I have survey multilingual communities, a library staff survey. Oh, and then they had these big poster, what, like conference?
Their poster sessions, so.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So you submit an idea that you've worked on or your focus has been on and you're able to present it not necessarily in a conference room where you speak for forty-five minutes, but it's almost like a bite-sized piece of drilling down a very specific topic. And it's a way for us to access even more information.
Absolutely.
And there's so many cool ideas on there. And since the person who worked very hard on this program is actually standing in front of you during these sessions, you can ask so many questions and you can learn so much more kind of in-depth and almost one-on-one, uh, with these really amazing, uh, members of our, our field.
Absolutely. And, and I like the data. I like data. So I like the information there that you can learn. It's kind of like walking history and sparks ideas. And then those are just resources, uh, that they had. And then all, all these authors and you can take pictures and you can get books. So that was really cool. Just meeting authors, hearing their story. Um, public library systems have transcended their conventional role as a book repository, evolving into dynamic knowledge hubs. So I thought that was a wonderful quote. I don't know where I got it. Um, but, um, the, what do libraries offer that we can go out as a commission and tell the whole community and get other commissioners? Is author visits and free books, real experiences, caters to the informational needs of our communities. Yes. Okay?
And.
Go ahead.
If anybody has the personality to reach out to authors and take a photo.
That was fun. And here's another, another poster that I liked. Um, let me see, why did I, oh, better boards, yeah. Better boards. And also I got this for art commissioners. This is, um, one of the workshops, team of teams, a collaborative model for work groups. And it has like actual things in, uh, that you can do at being on a, a, a work group or like a commission. So those are back there. Um, and let me take a second to talk about the workshops. There's a million workshops, literally. So, and, and one can be in one hotel and the others at the whole. So that's why I would, next time, whoever, like really plan out like when this one starts, because there might be three that you want to go to at the same time. And yeah, all that type of stuff. But you can always, and on my phone, there's an ALA app that you can get all the, uh, slides and everything too. Yeah. Um, public libraries are not mere silent sanctuaries of solitude. They are lively spaces that pulse with community engagement. Isn't that, yeah. That was from one of, a workshop or something. Okay, next one. Um, and these are more posters. I really liked the posters. Yeah. These are the poster sessions like Cassandra was saying, and these are some of the ones that I went to, the outreach and engagement. Um, I think this, the, the, uh, isn't this a, a county library? Yeah.
That's Jennifer Chang. Yeah.
Yeah.
She works at Cooper Tino in particular.
So that's a county, yeah. And I think the, is the other person a teacher or they had a teacher from a school do the research with them, which I thought that was cool.
Monica Wexler.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I thought it was cool how they collaborated, like the school and the library. Um, and then this Loaf for Kids, I had never heard of it. Has anyone ever heard of Loaf for Kids? So from what I understand, kids, students, even adults can come and create, create, like say you're an author, you create for free and you give it away for free. It's kind of like a place where you can create, um, but you can look it up. Um, but I, I liked that station because people were sharing things that they created and, um, what you can't see, which is like this way, is where, uh, people were actually giving away the things that they created. Yeah. Um, and then those were, yeah, you, it's a PowerPoint. You'd have to click on that. But those were all different leaks, links of things that intrigued me and that I thought would be cool for us. And I think that's the last one. And if you guys have any question.
Did you meet any other library?
So, okay, let me, I met, I, I, I went to two ones that had boards, like library boards, eh, yeah, and, and, and I think Friends was one, uh, was, I think there was a Friends one, a Friends one. So, but two of them I went to that had boards. I, I didn't meet anyone that said, oh, I'm a library commissioner. I'm sure they were there because there are, how many people were there? Do you know?
Uh, oh, I, I believe they put it around twenty thousand.
It was, uh, when I tell you it was, I mean.
It's the entire convention center in San Diego.
I'm just thinking it's like a, in a hotel where I was, I was like, oh my. And then when I saw people with their push carts going into the thing at five o'clock, running, I'm like, oh my God.
They line up big waves.
Yeah, people were lined up with bags, with totes, yeah.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand. And I can say that if we ever need, if we ever need totes for something that we're doing, I, we, I could get us totes from. Yeah, I've already made a connection like that. So, yeah. Um, so my takeaway for art commission is to like just spark in our commission and grow our commission and, uh, know that library, if you go back to the second, that quote, that the public's life burries have transcended their conventional role as book repositories, evolving into dynamic knowledge hubs. So really getting that message out to our community and growing our commission and helping all libraries all over. And, um, raise your hand, this is not a, no, yeah, just raise your hand if you have ever heard of the, um, hold on, oh God, what's it called? So it's called the, um, library.
Come on.
Bill of Rights.
Rights, the Library Bill of Rights. Did you, that's what I'm, okay. Did you know that there is, that you, there is a library, American Library Bill of Rights? So I want all you all to go look and find the right that you're gonna uphold. Yeah. Wait, the life, there's American Library, just like there's a California Echo, that governs, there's the American. Did they have, I think Tom did open Samway, they probably did, but I wasn't, yeah.
Well, I think their main hall. Some five thousand.
I, I know that. A lot of.
Insane though.
Yeah. I know that Connie Chan, has anyone ever heard of Connie Chan from CBS?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So if you don't know Connie Chan, she was a keynote speaker. And she, if you Google, I think I have a picture, but it's not on there. But she was like maybe twenty years old in the, with, and there's a picture of her in the white hat. Anyway, that's a whole nother story, but it was with Nixon. But anyway, you know, she spent fifty years in the broadcasting and all of that. And she, and she wrote a book. Okay, I said Chan, is it Chan?
Yeah.
You meant I.
Anyway, yeah. I apologize. I, I get excited. Yeah, so. But, um, she gave, I cried mu- many times to listen to her story of how she got to where she is and her whole story of being an immigrant and her parents and just, oh my God, yeah. And then we had Trevor Noah. I, there, there were no seats for him. And then we had the first slide, uh, Taraji P. Henson. She wrote a children's book. And it's based, uh, based on her own experience, like of being bullied and things of that nature. So that was good. All the keynote speakers, yeah. So who's next for next year?
I, I have to say, Victoria, you did such an amazing job. And I heard from other, you know, librarians that I was speaking to and I mentioned, you know, oh yeah, we, we have a commissioner with us and we were, and we're so, they said, that is the best thing. They're getting really involved. They really want to know about what we do and all these opportunities. So even just this group diving in and taking the chance on that opportunity and really moving with it and the city for supporting that.
Absolutely.
Very cool.
Thank you so much. Please take that message back. Yes.
And I got so many, um, I got so much feedback from other librarians and, uh, other, um, you know, directors and, and people that I've worked with previously, they just thought, you know.
I think it's wonderful.
They were, they were very excited about that type of partnership with the city and that's love, strong connection and having the commission be that, um, invested in, you know, what we do. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you all for considering and, yeah, who's next and, uh, CLA, uh.
Definitely opens up your eyes and helps you to see the library system in a whole different way. Yeah.
Is it a yearly? Annual?
ALA is annual. Uh, there's also CLA, which is the California Libraries Association. There is, um, another one called PLA, which is Public Libraries Association.
Wow.
Um, but I think, you know, this group might also benefit from, yeah, possibly attending, um, CLA.
Yeah.
It's very California-based.
Right, yeah. I would recommend smaller. I'm like, oh my God.
Well, you took, you took the leap and, you know, it was very fortu- fortuitous that it happened to be California this year, you know. But sometimes it's in far-flung, far-flung, uh, cities and states. So thank you again for attending.
Absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity. I am very grateful and appreciative. Yes. Okay, um, so, n- oh, and then no public comment. So, um, any possible action to review and comment on library commission work plan for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five?
I actually have, uh, yeah, so the second topic was the promotion of library commission. And I talked about the applications for the library.
Oh, yeah.
And so far, we checked in with the city clerk and we have one applicant that I believe was from March, for March.
Okay. And, and what's the next steps for that?
Um, so the next step would be, I believe, is, since we do have a quorum, if, say if there were to be someone who would step down, then they would take that opportunity to interview that individual.
Yeah, uh, uh, unless it's, um, so at the end of the year, they're going to hold interviews for all of the vacancies.
Oh, good.
The commissions, including this.
Oh, good, okay.
So currently there's one applicant. I believe the interviews are gonna be in probably November.
Okay.
And then they'll do the appointment in December in time for January.
Good. Okay, so we still have time to recruit because we would like to have five commissioners. But are they gonna allow us to have five commissioners? Are we, are they, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's.
Oh, good.
That's what they want. They want to fill all.
Because if someone's not here, then we don't have a quorum. So technically we really don't have a, I mean, we have a quorum by, by the hair on our chinny-chin chin. Cause Adam said, if you're not here, we don't have a quorum.
But the city won't enter, won't do interviews. They're really, they seem to be saying no until the rest.
Yeah. So actually, up until, up until last year, they actually were doing interviews.
Yeah, on a regular basis.
They just found that for a variety of reasons.
Yeah.
But you know what? Let's just do it once a year unless the commission can't meet for.
Okay.
And then in that case, they'll, they'll, they'll start the interview.
Yeah, but then whoever, if, uh, decide in March, do they know that?
Information? Um, I do, I don't know. It's all handled through the city folks office.
It's all handled through the city. It's all handled through the city clerk, so, yeah. Uh, so, uh, we can, we can, we can just send them a little.
Yeah, just to let them know, please. Forget about you.
Yeah. Don't go, yeah, don't go.
It's a great point.
We have one last meeting, don't we?
Yes, yes. Uh, the second was, the second Wednesday.
Again.
In November.
Second Wednesday.
Oh, okay, we can always.
November thirteenth. November.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll talk offline.
Uh, November thirteenth.
November thirteenth, that's the week of presidents, or whatever, somebody's birthday on that Monday, yeah.
Fair.
Oh, man.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move along to.
Yeah.
The next item.
Okay, um, so the next item is, um, possible action review and comment on library commission work plan for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. And I don't know if we said this or not, but are we gonna be presenting to city council?
Yes, yes. So, uh, I actually spoke to city clerk in, uh, October.
And you'll tell me the date.
Yeah, I was gonna check with you. It's either the first or the third Monday.
First or third Monday at seven.
At six.
Six. At six, that's right, cause I fly from.
Yeah, so, uh, we can talk, we can talk offline.
Fine, okay, but it's November, that's fine.
October.
October, yes. October, I think Halloween month.
The first or the third, so thirty first, but opposite.
Yes, I'll probably be the third.
We could touch base.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, so let's move into library reports.
Okay, so we don't have any to review comment on library commission work plan, no, okay. All right, so we're gonna move to item number eight, library reports, Gilroy Library Report for June twenty twenty four, July twenty twenty four, and August twenty twenty four. Jennifer.
Okay, wonderful. So, yes, we have not met for a few months, so don't blink, summer is over. So I'm, I, I have, you have our monthly, um, reports in your packet. I'm going to do a condensed version.
Nice.
Um, because of course, summer reading actually has, unbelievably, uh, school is started, so I hope that everyone read their five books and got their prize. Um, we have had fun opportunity for children. There's actually a drawing for kids' box tickets, so if you have any little fun. Uh, very exciting, um, it's for the September twenty second show. I'll say that day. I know, um. So of course, as school is beginning, that gives us an opportunity to talk to our community about all the resources that we have. Certainly to support students, but students of all ages. So we partner, and I know Commissioner Kim knows this, um, with our school district. So we ensure that every child has library access with their student E account. We want them to be able to get onto Brain Views or those digital versions of the encyclopedia. Uh, so we'll continue that work. It's critical to help everyone succeed. Additionally, homework help will get back started. That's in person for kinder through sixth grade. And we have volunteers here on site to help them with that math problem or language sheet, so we're excited to bring that back. Additionally, for some adult learners, our ESL classes are beginning again throughout the district. And both the homework help and the ESL classes, um, we do have huge need, um, for volunteers. So if anyone's interested in that, all the information is on our website. I do not wanna take Cassandra's thunder because there's so many good things, so I'm gonna skip a little bit. But I did wanna highlight that one of the things here in Gilroy that makes you unique is, I, um, the setup downstairs for the reading program, which is our adult literacy.
Right, right.
And so we actually have staff here on site, um, we've expanded staff here, um, and additionally, at our Campbell headquarters, we are starting, we're building a building, as they say. So we're very excited about our new literacy center. It's called The Nest. Um, for any of you who've been to our Campbell facility, it is very much an administration, um, kind of building. However, this one will have a community room, it will have tutoring rooms, and will have a real home for people mid-county to come and get the help that they need in English language learning. So we're very excited about that. Um, and again, to the point, this has been in the works for many years, many years. Um, so to bring that to fruition is very exciting. Uh, as we have changes and people go off onto the next chapters of their lives, you may soon be meeting Megan Holland, um, so some of you may have known Chuck, Chuck Griffin, he was with the library for twelve years. He happily wrote Into the Sunset in retirement, yes.
I saw him at the conference.
Yes. And, um, so now we have, uh, Megan, who is our new financial administrator, service manager. So she'll be working obviously with the city, uh, and we're happy to always bring new people and new perspectives onto our team. So that is kind of my, I'm just gonna stop there so I can turn it over to Cassandra, cause I know there's lots of good stuff happening here in Gilroy.
Uh, yes, thank you, and I do highly, highly, uh, recommend, um, hopefully you all will get a chance to meet Megan. She is wonderful, uh, I think her vision for what we can do is so, she, she's, she's ready with, okay, let, how do we make it, you know, physically possible? And, um, she's very open to the experience and, uh, I really, I think she's a great fit. So I hope we all get to meet her, um, in your, in our line of work here. So just some really quick stuff again, um, this, the, these are the heavy hitter months. We know that there is so much programming going on in the summertime, um, so the staff here have always really stepped it up. We were given some really great opportunities to expand our programming series and to try new things. Again, uh, something that we're very excited to be able to support and provide. Um, so just an agenda, kind of what we're looking at here, uh, again, it's all in your packet. Um, so some updates, um, uh, the ALA recap that, um, Victoria did, no notes. Splendid, uh, she was amazing, uh, she brings such enthusiasm. And I think, uh, her highlighting, um, some of our questions about diversity, also some discussions we had about, um, that I looked into when we're talking about digital inequities and digital access. Um, how do we drive that forward here? I think there were community level, um, things, uh, again, about how do we mentor staff and create, um, make sure that multiple, every type of person that can possibly be represented in the libraries here feels welcome, feels comfortable. And a lot of that happens for our staff, so I can make sure they have all the tools that they need. And, um, like you saw Juan coming in, um, Juan, Juan is a library lover. Uh, he really, uh, has great fond memories of the libraries and seeing the child. So him continuing that and us providing mentorship to be able to, um, support his career effort.
Absolutely.
Something that was highlighted at ALA as well, and I, again, um, we're really lucky to work for a district that supports those services and those ideas. Um, it's not something that, oh, let's just start looking at this now. It's, it's a plan and it's a process that, um, our district has been involved in for many years. So, uh, it kind of just makes us feel like we're on the right track and we're, we're doing these ideas organically. And we're kind of at the forefront and making sure that, uh, we're making good decisions and we're being really holistic about our approach to the community. So it's really exciting to know that, like, we're, we're doing the hard work and we've been doing it. And, um, you know, we're able to be model best practices and show that these ideas are possible. Uh, and they aren't just abstracts, they're, they're physically here now.
Absolutely.
It's just a really great opportunity for that. Uh, we still, uh, we have some opportunity, new opportunities for engagement that we're really excited about, uh, some big ones. So, um, as we mentioned, uh, we're some building updates, some really beautiful refreshes coming to the library through, the city, through some, um, you know, our children's spaces work. As you mentioned, play is integral to learning. Play is how we self-regulate, play is how we experience and learn, right?
Absolutely.
So, um, again, our district has a real commitment to that through. You know, you know, uh, Jennifer's partnership is really focused on, uh, the experience of the library and how it can be an impactful place.
Absolutely.
Uh, and how important that is for not just children, but the entire community.
Absolutely.
So we're really excited about, uh, those building update. Open access is our service that is currently, we have about fifty, um, participants at this point. So basically, it's a way to allow people to access the library when, uh, we are traditionally closed. So you'll have access to our lobby spaces, um, starting at ten AM. So on the days that we're usually don't open till one, you do have that earlier access for things like holds and browsing and being able to access wifi. So, um, please consider that an option for you all.
Absolutely.
Our hours are available, um, I have them posted, um, but that's something that's kind of big and new and we've been waiting for a while for that to come through. So it's a, a new, new thing that we started, um, at the beginning of this month. And then also, we started our passport services.
I cannot believe that. Are you kidding me? Yeah, that's. That's really, hallelujah.
So we're really excited to be able to offer something as integral and important as a passport in the welcoming, warm environment of a library.
Yeah.
So to be able to provide support in Spanish, be able to provide support, uh, our passport office is actually open till eight PM. So, uh, you know, passports are something that everyone, basically, you need it, so, um.
That I do.
Right, and with limited availability through other organizations, um, we felt that we would be able to supplement and be able to serve our community by providing, uh, more expanded hours, uh, services in other languages. And also in a space that they already feel welcomed in, as opposed to maybe some other government institutions where they might not feel, um, may, maybe more intimidated by the process.
Absolutely.
Uh, Daniel Nguyen is our passport clerk, he is wonderful. And he, uh, was a, a clerk here, I think he's been here for four years. So, uh, many of our patrons already know him and they know our services and they know, they, they come to trust us. So they feel comfortable bringing this type of important information to us to give these services. And our prices, if anybody asks, are, um, very comparable or less than most places for those services. Um, so there are standard fees, but our processing fees.
That is wonderful.
Anybody else.
And then there's a copy of someone had to make a copy, it's like you could do everything here, you have to, right, right?
So, uh, it's a really exciting service, um, the signups are online, um, and appointments are, are filling up. So if you're interested, you know, please, uh, check that, um, uh, appointment calendar regularly. But we're really excited to offer it and it's something that, uh, again, we've, um, Jennifer and the county team has been really, um, we've gotten their buy-in and this is something that's very important to them in terms of providing, um, access. So we're really excited to do it. Please stop by, all forms of that, or. Staff, you know, please stop by and say hello. Um, so this is Patty.
So is the passport thing gonna be like in all libraries? Is that like a new wave that's taking place? Cause I love it.
We already offer it in, um, in La Feliz, Milpitas, and Cupertino. We will be opening Saratoga, although I will give a shout out specifically, as you all know, being South County residents, it was a real need in this particular community. And so, um, Cassandra and her team really jumped in and we actually, the county actually closed their passport executive facility, um, uh, which is now at Tasman, right? Could you have to go farther if you live in Gilroy? So, um, I actually meet with the clerk regularly and so we actually took on, um, that responsibility for the county of Santa Clara. And I think being here is really great, so.
That is fabulous.
Not everybody, but a lot, but you, but you, you know.
Love it.
So it's something that we're really, uh, proud to, um, uh, have as a service. And, and we expect you all, you have to do those, uh, those major things, you know, please stop by.
My new mom.
Um, so again, engagement pieces, this is Patty, she is one of our, uh, newer, uh, children's librarians, she's amazing. And her, yeah, her enthusiasm, uh, is a really kind of, uh, I think she is, she's a wonderful librarian. And also it's just a reminder that like, this is what we do every day, like this is the, this is the impact, this is the connection, um, this is how we serve. And so we're so excited to do it, um, in, in. Pieces, um, you will see some, uh, these are links to, um, Lunch in the Library was featured in a news story on, uh, KBIX.
Wow.
And, uh, you'll, you'll see some popular effects. Uh, and, uh, uh, there was also a really, uh, wonderful article, uh, in the Mercury News about our passport services.
I will go read that.
Um, so please, uh, the, these are links, um, you know, but, uh, they're in your packets as well. So please, um, please feel free to peruse. Um, so then this is just our fun summer. We had, um, Brian the Magician, we had our Bat Coalition, uh, come. We had, uh, STEAM and STEM programs, these were run by our librarians. We had the Banana Slug Trio come and do their, the lovely surface show. Um, and so these programs are mainly funded, uh, also through our Lunch in the Library program. So again, uh, huge opportunities for enrichment, so we're beating bellies, we're beating minds, we're doing it all. Um, so we're really excited to, to have been able to have those opportunities this summer. Uh, so again, uh, local engagement, these are all of our library staff in this corner down here. Uh, this is, uh, I have a local. And then we had lovely volunteers in the summer to read with me time, so local teens would come and you could pick a favorite book to read, uh, with your group of friends. So we had some really wonderful opportunities and again, trying new ideas. We'd never done like a reading circle before and it was very wonderful and, uh, well-intended.
And what's the blue, the, the blue looks like a lot of fun.
These are our blue blocks, so these are a really awesome way, again, that we could bring play into the library. Um, they're huge fun, fun blocks, they're big foam blocks. Um, and we have them sometimes here in the downstairs area, now that that space is kind of been opened up. Um, and so, yeah, just some really amazing opportunities for play and for fun. Um, we did have larger audiences, this was our paint night. Uh, we did some outside crafts, meet your neighbors, play some games. And, uh, this is our, this is the, the reptile guy, of course. Attendees there. So again, just a really nice recap, this was actually our teen paint night and I think we had about twenty teens.
Amazing.
To get twenty teens and room during summer.
In the library, yeah. That is fabulous.
So again, uh, these were the giveaway books that we had through Lunch in the Library, again, uh, building home libraries, uh, feeding bellies and doing, having them participate in our summer reading program. Uh, these are again, some STEAM STEM program. Uh, so yeah, we had a really fun summer this year, uh, we're really excited. And I, this is the numbers page, and it's kind of like, but you know, to, to hit some big highlights. Um, we've seen a ten percent increase in our items circulated, uh, as opposed to last year. We'll basically add, um, pre-pandemic numbers when it comes to our circulation. Um, we've seen a nine percent increase from last year in foot traffic. So again, um, and with our programs, we actually saw, as Jennifer mentioned, um, uh, what is this, this is three, uh, four, uh, come for children's programming. So, um, most of those increases happened because we, um, we're trying new children's programming and, uh, we are, you know, looking at those needs. So, um, we're getting there, you know. Um, we circled over sixteen hundred meals this year for our Lunch in the Library program. Um, we are surpassing pre-pandemic levels of circulation, program attendant, patronizing and attended, uh, just in the library. Um, so in the month of July, we had eighty-one programs. So, yeah, you know, and that's a really exciting number, um, that only happened with friends, because the districts, because the staff are willing to take on that much responsibility, um, right? Um, especially in the summertime, the, our, the staff here could say, you know what? I think we can stop at sixty. Uh, but they're so, so willing to try new things. Um, we also had Pop-up Library, we had, uh, services to, to a migrant center that we also do in, in incorporation with or in conjunction with other, um, We had, uh, services to, to a migrant center that we also do in, in incorporation with or in conjunction with other, uh, library services. Our community outreach specialists, et cetera. Um, so we did, uh, oh, and we started a new Vietnamese bilingual storytime. So, uh, new things, new, new opportunities, new ways to engage.
New ways to engage, that's good.
So, uh, National Night Out was recently, it was, uh, last week, wonderful opportunity, uh, we did Party in America as well. I think, Adam, it's always a really great, wonderful time, again, to partner with, uh, city organizations, community organization. And, uh, just how that what we do. Um, so again, uh, we're working with our Parks and Wildlife Commission to discuss opportunities for the story walks. Um, I've, I've shown you a few examples, um, the most recent ones, I think, went up in Morgan Hill and Campbell. So, uh, I have, uh, you know, we, we have some more information on that. Do you know where in Morgan Hill?
Jack Fisher and Campbell.
Well, please, uh, take a look, Bruce. Is the one that would be considered for here. It's called Cat's Colors. So again, if anybody wants to take a look, uh, we're looking to again strengthen our can, city connections and partnerships. So, welcome to hosting, uh, Commissioner, meet and greet if you're, you let us know, uh, the patio is available.
We gotta do that.
We are looking to, uh, some of our upcoming strategic plan goals, um, they always change for our libraries as we. Complete certain goals and look forward to new ones. Uh, I'm really committed to bringing some more local art and art to our, um. Buildings here, so, um, something else that you're interested in, um, you know, we know we have a lot. So, something to consider, um, and also, uh, digital inclusion and equity. We still have plans on the table for how we can, we wanna make sure that that's a focus and something that we can look at. And, uh, create some tangible difference in, um, tangible, uh, action items for communities. Um, and then employee wellness, uh, we did some, Cleveland County does an employee wellness study. And, um, I, as much as I don't know if these, they're very internal numbers, but, um. The Gilroy Library, I think I'm very proud to be a part of this library because everybody really is focused on supporting one another. And, uh, working towards a common goal. Also, um, they feel, they, they seem to feel very supported. In terms of their professional development. So it's something that I'm really proud to be a part of. Yeah, it's really, it's a, it, this is an amazing place to work. There's so many opportunities and it's always, you know, great to work with city partners that are also really. I really appreciate those things. Yeah, you know, we have a million upcoming events. You know, don't, you know, um, some ones to highlight, we have, uh, Spanish classes for entrepreneurs. So they're in Spanish and, um, it's, um. There's gonna be members of the, uh, Mexican consulate will be here, um, to, uh, work with. Entrepreneurs in the area and, uh, just supporting them and their business needs. Uh, we know the city is, uh, looking into, uh. You know, creating more business and, and being a business hub, so we support our local businesses. Um, so you know, growing some vegetables, we're doing an automotive workshop. That's one of the first times we're doing that, which we're really excited about. Um, and, uh, we're doing some financial planning, although, um, there's a tentative, uh. We're figuring out some last minute dates for the, an election forum with the A A U W, um, you know, to provide, again. Great, solid, um, nonpartisan, non-biased information to voters. Um, so yeah, a lot of exciting things coming up. Thank you again. It's all because you, you all are supportive and, uh, this staff that works here, uh, really makes magic our everyday.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, you look no further.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and I, I will say, I will say, the, the post office here, they're really good. They're very helpful. They're very efficient, um, so I really, I really do give them a shout out, uh, and we wanted to assist them. And the community.
Absolutely, and you're up in the weekend. And they're, yeah, they're trying to take mail and mail packages and they do, so I think it's good. Wait a minute, until they get their package out.
Oh, wow. Um, yeah, so it's a really, it's a really great opportunity and also, um, shameless plug, if you have to come here for your passport.
So smart, whoever that idea was. Um, thank you, you guys, for those reports. So our last.
It's open, um, Tuesday through Sunday, uh, Tuesday through Saturday. Yeah, you can take your photos here. We, we mail them for you, so you don't have to worry about, uh, you get a ID number. It's literally one stop shop. You just bring your, you, we even have the forms here. You don't even have to mind it. Fine, they're all here. So the only thing we don't do is renewals.
Okay.
So when we don't do renewals for new passports. Your passport has been expired for over fifteen years, you have to apply for a new one.
For a new one anyway, okay, new ones.
But renewals are done, uh, through the regular mail anyway. But just to clarify.
Yeah, and do you do the post, the card? Cause you can get the passport card, right?
So you can get both or either.
Yes, that sounds wonderful. Okay, anybody have any comments, uh, questions? Okay, and then item number ten is future agenda items. Can, can we add on there? Um, uh, conversation around a commission meet and greet? And take, um, Cassandra up on that. Um, and then also can we somewhere build into the agenda, always, uh, our, our, um. Our library commission's purpose statement. So I don't know where that would be, but just to always bring us back to that and whoever's in the audience of why. We are here, yeah. Anything else that needs to be on the agenda? We probably should say, add, oh, we should probably add on their update on. Commission applicants, even though they're not gonna be applying. I mean, I'm sorry. Just on there, interview, what's the status? Yeah. Anybody else have something for the future agenda items? Okay, so number eleven is adjourned. Oh, thank you. Our meeting is ending at eight twenty-nine P M.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so that's fine. Thank you. Good job, everybody. Eight thirty, we stayed late to that, we're.